Okay, how's that?
Good afternoon and welcome. I'm David Goldberg, co-chair of the Seattle Planning Commission. And on behalf of the commission, we'd like to actively recognize that we are on indigenous land. The traditional and current territories of the Coast Salish people who have lived on and stewarded these lands since the beginning of time and continue to do so today. We acknowledge the role that traditional Western-centric planning practices have played in harming, displacing, and attempting to erase native communities. We commit to identifying racist practices and strive to center restorative land stewardship rather than unsustainable and extractive use of the land. So again, welcome. All Planning Commission meetings are open to the public, but please note that the commission doesn't hold public hearings because we are an advisory body. We provide recommendations to elected leaders and they in turn make the actual decisions. We encourage individuals and organizations to provide their comments to the appropriate elected officials. This is a meeting, this is a hybrid meeting today with some folks participating remotely, like myself, and others participating in the boards and commissions room at Seattle City Hall. We follow a set of norms that are called the Color Brave Space norms, and I would like one of my fellow commissioners to choose one that applies to today's discussion, which will mostly focus on the Vision Zero response. And if anybody would volunteer, I'd really appreciate it. If I don't get a volunteer, I will volunteer someone. Thank you, Zio. If you would just pick one and read it, and if you have a thought about how it applies, then let us know.
Yeah, I pick practice examining racially biased systems. I think that while Vision Zero is a citywide initiative and something that we're working for in all neighborhoods, traffic violence and pedestrian deaths aren't evenly distributed throughout the city, and a lot of that maps onto sort of historic harms that are based in racially biased systems.
Thank you. That was beautifully put, even though I put you on the spot. On our agenda today, we have, as I said, the one main item, which is the Vision Zero Action Plan. But first, we have to approve the meetings, the minutes from our meeting on May 23rd. And I would ask for a motion and a second to approve the minutes before we discuss any changes or amendments.
So moved by Michaela.
Thanks, Michaela.
Rick Seconds, thank you both. Are there any changes or amendments to the minutes? Hearing none, I'll call for the vote. All in favor of adopting the minutes, please say aye.
Aye.
And opposed? Any abstentions? Minutes are approved. Our next full commission meeting is scheduled for Thursday, June 27th. It's a morning meeting from 7:30 to 9:00. That meeting will be in a hybrid format like this one, with options to meet in person in the boards and commission room in Seattle City Hall or online using the MS Teams platform. Our next Land Use and Transportation Committee meeting is scheduled for next Thursday, June 20th, and that will be 7:30 to 9:00, held only online via MS Teams. As noted before, this is a hybrid meeting with people both in person and remotely, and I'm going to review the format of the meeting. During the meeting, there will be opportunities for commissioners to ask questions and provide comment. I would ask commissioners to put your name in the chat in MS Teams to be recognized to speak. Please do not put substantive comments in the chat as members of the public do not have access to the chat. Also a reminder to please send Vanessa Murdock your leadership slate nominations by close of business on Monday, June 17th. That's this coming Monday. We do have some public comment. I think, John, you suggested that the written submitted comment we hold until the end of the meeting.
I think that would work best, especially just to allow our presenter from SDOT.
Great. I think that makes great sense. So at this time, though, we'd like to offer those who would like to make a comment here at the beginning of the meeting, who are present in the room, to do so.
So I'm gonna, I'd like to invite Thomas to come first. Come on up to the table. Thomas has a comment specific to Vision Zero. And then we can invite others to come.
Okay, so just a few prefatory words before we start the comment. We do provide the time for public comment. Reminder that we don't hold public hearings and we are an advisory body, and we make recommendations to elected leaders. And you should remember that the mayor and city council are those leaders who do make the decisions on behalf of the city. We encourage individuals and organizations to provide their comments to those officials. And now, I would like you to please keep your comments to two minutes, and we can start with our first commenter.
Should I start?
Go ahead.
Hello, members of the Seattle Planning Commission. I am Thomas Daniels, a student of Lincoln High School in North Seattle. As part of a school project, I looked at Oman, country in the Middle East, and analyzed how traffic safety is addressed there, and potential lessons that Vision Zero could take from it. In the past seven years, Oman has reduced crash fatalities by 55%. And one of the main causes of death in Oman was speeding. One part of the strategy that they used to control speed and reduce deaths was by installing radar speed signs effectively. I've found that there's many spots where these signs could be used outside of the current recommendation for radar signs, that being where 15% of people are driving five miles per hour or over the speed limit. One example is in unlighted Ferkilman intersections near View Ridge neighborhood, where an 100-foot hill can cause cars to reach high speeds while approaching a very popular bike trail and pedestrian intersection. Effective implementation of radar speed signs and locations such as those in the above example could help Seattle reduce traffic deaths to zero.
Thanks. Would anyone else like to offer public comment at this time? Or we also have the option to offer public comment at the end of the meeting, which is in about one hour from now. Gary?
Yes.
Okay, go ahead.
Thank you for your hard work in reviewing and commenting on the draft One Seattle Plan. The draft One Seattle Plan barely touches homelessness and public safety, which are huge issues in Seattle. The 2035 Comp Plan began to touch on these issues and included policies on public safety, community well-being, and human service facilities. So such facilities are convenient while not being over-concentrated in areas. Specifically, policy DT HSP 5 says, "Seek to avoid over-concentration of human service facilities in any one area of downtown." That policy, along with the entire community well-being element, are being deleted without the goals being achieved first in the current draft One Seattle Plan. With no replacement of similar policies anywhere, the policy should be retained and expanded to the entire city, not just to certain neighborhoods. We know the city will continue to address chronic homelessness, which is not caused only by housing affordability, but mainly by drug addiction and mental health issues, by continuing to provide for human service facilities like emergency shelters, permanent supportive housing, and treatment facilities, as the city should, but not in the fashion that is not guided by comprehensive plan policies and regulations. Therefore, I suggest retaining and combining existing policies, CW 7.7 and DT HSP 5, to say something like this. Site new human service facilities in or near urban centers, neighborhood centers, and urban neighborhoods, considering access to frequent transit, and use Good Neighbor Guidelines to consider the needs of consumers and the community, while avoiding the over-concentration of such facilities in any one area of the city. As stewards of the comprehensive plan, you are responsible for anticipating unintended consequences in land use incompatibility and correcting them when there is clear evidence of a reduction in livability, public safety, and economic vitality caused by the incompatibility, as with the over-concentration of 17 homeless shelters and facilities around the CID and Pioneer Square already. Why? Because it's not addressed with the comprehensive plan policies first. If not addressed by the comprehensive plan policy first, it could get worse and will occur in other neighborhoods with lots of commercial zoning around them, like North Seattle, the Aurora Corridor, and Bitter Lake, and elsewhere. With that said, please send the mayor and OPCD an addendum to your letter urging them to address public safety and community well-being and vitality in a separate element to address the issues mentioned above, before it comes back to you. Gary Lee, member of the CID Public Safety Council, ISRD board member, and city of running planner for 33 years, just retired.
Would anyone else like to offer public comment at this point? Thank you. And you are?
I'm Grace Norman. Hello. I'd like to commend you on-
Sorry, can you say your name first?
Certainly. My name is Grace Norman, and I'm from a citizen group called Circle the Square in Pioneer Square.
Thank you.
I'd like to commend you on the extensive work on the 2035 Comp Plan to date. It is exciting to see a vision for the city take shape, especially one that is centered on equity and community well-being. But right now, there's a harmful imbalance in Seattle that this plan could address. And I'm here to urge you to take, to add language to section CW 7.7 to prevent the oversaturation of human services in any one area and to encourage redistribution of needed resources in areas that are lacking. Such a policy is an act of equity that can help individuals and communities alike recover and thrive. Thank you so much for this consideration.
Would anybody else like to offer public comment at this time, or wait until one hour from now at the end of our meeting?
My name is Jay Yanamura. My wife and I live in Chinatown, and we are here to support members of our community that are very concerned about the potential change in language in the One Seattle Plan draft. We're worried about the new plan allowing an over-concentration of services in our area, and that could increase the amount of safety issues that we are currently experiencing. It could get considerably worse. We have many friends that own businesses in the Chinatown CID area. They, of course, are working right now and could not be here, so I am here to represent them also. But if you take a walk around Chinatown, you see a lot of people that are just sitting and laying down on the sidewalks and hate to say this, but scaring away potential customers for the businesses. The business community is suffering because there are 17 shelters and services in Chinatown and Pioneer Square area, and the new language may allow for even more to come into our area. We would like the burden to be spread around the city, so we would get some relief, and thank you for your time.
Thank you. Jay, can you please spell your last name?
Sure. It's Y-A-N-A-M-U-R-A.
And J-A-Y?
Yes.
Thank you. Okay. Are there any others that would like to provide public comment now, or wait until the end of our meeting?
All I want to say is play the paper to write out what I might say while I'm listening.
Okay, and the rest? Throw a paper now?
Yes.
Okay.
Give me one to give me.
Okay. Okay. David, I think?
Okay.
Can I just say something?
Good, one more.
Hello.
You want to also?
I'm David. Real life, it seems like.
Okay.
My name is Kayleen Yanamura, and I also am married to Jay. I'm married to Jay, and we live in the CID, and we love the area, but lately it's been getting very scary. So I totally agree with Gary and what Jay said. Just walking over here today, we already passed at least four druggies that were on the sidewalk and laying down and everything and asking if they needed help and everything. So we would really like to have them spread out a little bit more. The Navigation Center is going to be closing at the end of this year, so we are hoping that 12th and Jackson will clear that up. And that's all I needed to say, but thank you.
And can you spell your first name?
Oh, yeah. K-A-L-E-N-E.
A-A. Thank you.
Thank you.
Okay. I think that's the end of public comment for now.
Okay. Thank you. Thank you all so much for your thoughts and for your commitment to quality of life in our city. I would, at this time, would like for us commissioners to introduce ourselves, and I can start, and then I will pass it on to my co-chair, Michaela. I'm, as I said, David Goldberg. He/him pronouns. I live in the Wallingford Urban Village, and I work for the State Department of Transportation. Michaela?
Kayla Daphern. I use she/her pronouns. I live in Capitol Hill, and I work in affordable housing policy and planning. I will pass it to Zio.
Hi, Zio Alvarez. She/her pronouns. I live in White Center Highland Park, and I'm a designer at an architecture firm downtown. Pass to Caleb.
Good afternoon. My name is Caleb Tolliday. He/him pronouns. I live in Beacon Hill now, and I work at Rainier Scholars as the Associate Director of Leadership Development. And I will pass it on to Rick.
Thanks, Caleb. I'm Rick Muller. I use he/him pronouns. I live between Wallingford and Green Lake in what will become the Tangle Town Neighborhood Center. I'm an architect and professor-in-chief at the University of Washington Department of Architecture, and I will pass it to Rose.
Hi, I'm Rose Louchila-Witson. Pronouns, they/them. I live up north in Lipton Springs, and I work as a professional wetland scientist and permitting specialist for Jacobs Engineering. I'm also sick, so I'll keep my camera off most of the time. And with that, I'll pass it to Deanna.
Hello, I'm Deanna Quintanar. I use she/her pronouns. I live in Capitol Hill. For my day job, I'm a multimodal transportation planner. And I will pass it over to Vanessa or someone, if you can help me, who hasn't gone.
How about Andy?
Andy.
We can hear you.
Okay. I'm Andy Danenberg. He/him. I live in northeast Seattle, and I teach at University of Washington, both in public health and in urban planning.
Nick?
Hello, Nick Whipple. I use he/him pronouns. I live in West Seattle in the North Del Ridge neighborhood. And for my day job, I'm a city planner on the east side. How about Monica?
Good afternoon, everyone. My name is Monica Sharma. I use she/her pronouns. I live in the Central District, and I work for King County Play Equity Coalition in policy and advocacy for equity in youth sports and physical activity. And I will pass to
I think we just staff.
Yeah, okay, cool. All right. I will pass to Vanessa.
Vanessa's not here. Robin, would you like to go?
Robin may have just jumped off.
Robin may have left us. Olivia?
Go ahead. Hi, everyone. Olivia Baker. I use she/her pronouns. I'm staff to the Planning Commission.
I'm John Hoy. I'm staff to the Planning Commission. I'm filling in for Vanessa Murdock, our executive director today. So, thank you all. I think we're ready for our presenter now. So Chair Goldberg, would you please provide your public comment?
Yeah. So we have staff here from the Seattle Department of Transportation to provide a briefing on the Vision Zero Action Plan. We have an hour for this agenda item. David, please leave 20 minutes for commissioner questions and comments. And would you please introduce yourself?
Yeah, absolutely. I'm David Burgesser. He/him pronouns. I'm a Vision Zero Project Lead with Seattle Department of Transportation.
Great. Take it away.
All right. I'll share my screen here. Let me give me a second here. Not sure how to get my notes screen up. Okay. Yeah. So thanks so much for having me to present on our Vision Zero updates and Vision Zero Action Plan. So for those of you who are not familiar with our Vision Zero program, it is a SDOT's program to eliminate traffic deaths and serious injuries on our streets. And so, you know, we've recently gone through some changes to this program and which are now operationalized in our new Vision Zero Action Plan that was published just a few weeks ago. And so we're really excited to kind of, you know, make substantial progress towards our Vision Zero goals and update you on, you know, how are we organizing the program and moving things forward. So just to start us off, just a quick note about our vision, mission, value, and goals at SDOT. So we see Seattle is a thriving, equitable community powered by dependable transportation, and we're on a mission to deliver a transportation system that provides safe and affordable access to places and opportunities. And so we do this through our six core values and goals, which are equity, safety, mobility, sustainability, livability, and excellence. And while the Vision Zero program is really, you know, centered on that safety goal, we do this with respect to our other five values, and particularly, you know, looking at, you know, the equity impacts of what we're deploying to improve safety on our streets. So I'll get into this a little bit more in the presentation here. So I'll start off by going over, you know, where we're stacking up, what we're seeing both on a national level, how we're stacking up compared to our peer cities, and then, you know, diving into some of our local safety trends. We analyze our data in a lot of different ways. I'll keep this at a pretty high level for this, the purposes of this presentation, but I'm happy to kind of dive into more data. Folks want to know about it. Talk, you know, kind of generally about our approach to Vision Zero and how we're starting to restructure, you know, the way we're looking at safety. And then I'll get more into, you know, how we're doing that through our new Vision Zero Action Plan, the proven safety countermeasures that we're using, and how we're approaching that both proactively and responsibly. And then talk about that in the context also of the Safe System Approach, which is the Federal Highways Administration's new national safety policy to look at how we approach safety on our streets from multiple angles. So before I really get into this, I want to kind of acknowledge the human element behind our work. So, you know, we know that the folks who are impacted by severe traffic collisions on our streets are more than just statistics. These are friends, our community members, family members. And since Seattle began its Vision Zero efforts in 2015, we've had over 1,700 people who have been seriously injured in crashes and 236 people who have been killed in crashes. And so we really want to hold space for these folks and remind ourselves of the human impact of the decisions we make and how we are designing our streets and continue to commit to taking action to end deaths and serious injuries on our streets by 2030. So a little bit about, you know, how we're stacking up, how we're comparing to other nations, other cities. So as a country, the United States has been moving in the wrong direction. We've really diverged from many of our peer countries, peer developed nations, over the last 10 years. So as many countries have seen severe crashes, particularly fatalities, go down, the United States has seen that trend go in the opposite direction. And so, you know, as a country, we're seeing about 40,000 fatal traffic crashes happen every year. And a lot of this is attributed to other countries prioritizing not just folks in vehicles, but also users outside of the vehicles. So people who are walking, who are biking, who are rolling. We've made a lot of substantial strides in our country in improving vehicle safety, but we haven't looked, you know, quite as much beyond that. In Seattle, however, we actually stack up relatively well compared to many of our peer American cities. But we know that there's still a lot of room to improve. So these are trends that we're continuing to track. But we know that zero is the only acceptable number of serious injuries and lives lost on our streets. And so that's the goal we're always going to continue to work towards. So since we launched our Vision Zero program in 2015, we're continuing to track these trends in a number of different ways. So these, the graph on the left here shows lives lost on our streets, and as you can see, those have been moving up since we started the program in 2015, but we have, as they kind of peaked in 2021, and we've started to see some of those drop off, particularly for people walking. But the number of serious injuries on our streets still continues in that upwards direction. So that's, we're continuing to track these trends and look at these, you know, every day. But this also isn't to say that our Vision Zero strategies aren't working. When we look at the safety results of many of the treatments we're deploying, of many of the projects that we're rolling out, we're seeing really positive safety results associated with them, but we know that there's a need to really scale up these treatments and approach safety from multiple angles, which is why we're adopting the Safe System Approach and restructuring, you know, how we're starting to do things in Seattle. We also know that not all users on our streets are impacted equally. So we know that folks who do not have the protection of a metal box around them, who are not in a vehicle, are more disproportionately impacted, and there's makeup about 70% of all the lives lost on our streets. So this includes people walking, biking, people on motorcycles and mopeds. And we've seen that number continue to trend upwards throughout the time we've had our Vision Zero program in place, whereas people driving, that stayed relatively flat. But we, you know, that's still part of the safety picture and, you know, part of what we're looking at when we look at the Vision Zero program. And then, as folks alluded to earlier, you know, not all communities in Seattle are impacted equally. So this just shows the breakdown of Seattle's newly redrawn council districts and where the serious injury and fatal crashes have happened over the last five years, or between 2018 and 2022. So we know that the south end of the city is disproportionately impacted. We're seeing more severe crashes happen in that area, particularly District 1 and District 2. But we know that, you know, if you kind of dive into this data a little bit more, there are other hotspots on our maps, particularly kind of the downtown core, the Aurora Corridor. So we're looking at all those on kind of corridor basis as well. And I'll get into that a little bit more in a few slides here. In District 1, though, we know that, you know, one of our, you know, why this, folks have kind of seen this map, when, before the council districts were redrawn, District 2 was actually had the highest percentage there. And a lot of those, a lot of that is because SODO has shifted between District 2 and District 1. So if you actually kind of break down the data here, you'll see that about 60% of those serious and fatal crashes happening in District 1 are actually happening east of the Duwamish, since that's really, you know, kind of one of our focus areas, is looking at how we can improve safety on some of those large multi-lane arterial roadways, where we're seeing a lot of, a lot of really fast-moving traffic, a lot of heavy vehicles out there. And so how we can, you know, protect all users on those roadways is something we'll be working on. So with the trends that we've seen in our data, and, you know, moving in that upwards direction, when our director Greg Spotts took over in 2022, one of his first orders of business was commissioning a top-to-bottom review of the Vision Zero program. So this was a really detailed look at, you know, what our safety practices were and how we could, you know, more rapidly advance Vision Zero. You know, what more could we do to kind of infuse safety into our, all of our projects, all of our practices and processes? So SDOT released that top-to-bottom review in early 2023 with, which included, you know, a public feedback component and then identified five momentum-building actions that we took that were things, you know, that we could immediately take action on. And so we addressed those throughout last year. And then it also included 12 broad recommendations and 100 detailed suggestions for how we could start to, you know, advance Vision Zero throughout our department, you know, not just within the Vision Zero team, within the Vision Zero program, but really throughout all of our processes and practices. And that's really, you know, kind of provided the foundation for developing our new Vision Zero Action Plan and really provided, you know, kind of a framework for how we define some of those strategies and actions. And then one of the biggest recommendations is adopting the FHWA's new Safe System Approach, which is how we've started to organize our action plan. And I'll get into that a little bit more. So with our Vision Zero program, you know, we've sort of, and how we're looking at safety, we've kind of divided it up into three different approaches, three prongs. So capital project partnerships, this is really looking at, you know, kind of working to infuse safety into all of the capital projects, all of the work that SDOT's doing. So we've recently kind of rolled out a new Vision Zero and Safety Evaluation Process through our Complete Streets Checklist, which is a process that all of our capital projects go through to start conducting a more rigorous safety evaluation, looking at historical crash data, looking at opportunities for proactive safety treatments whenever any type of project gets constructed, whether that's a road paving project, whether you're, you know, rebuilding sidewalks, whether you're doing bike facilities, a transit project, looking at, you know, where are those opportunities? You know, if we're touching a signal, like let's look at opportunities for putting in leading pedestrian intervals or no turn on red. Or, you know, if there's a location along a corridor where we might be doing, you know, paving work, for example, looking at, you know, what types of crash patterns are happening there and how can we leverage that project and the work happening out there to correct some of those issues? So it really helps us to, you know, advance our Vision Zero goals, take everything a step further. And then within our actual Vision Zero safety investments, kind of splitting that up into a responsive approach, which is kind of how we, you know, the traditional way of doing things, looking at, you know, where crashes are happening on our streets with the data that we have available and deploying appropriate treatments that are going to address those patterns. And then a proactive approach, which is using the data, what we know is effective and scaling that up. So, you know, before crashes have a chance to occur on our streets, looking at, you know, how can we design our system for better safety outcomes in, you know, in an informed way and deploy those treatments where they're going to be most impactful? So we have a lot of great data sources to kind of help inform that prioritization, both on the responsive end and on the proactive side. And I'll get into those a little bit more, you know, with our responsive approach. A lot of that comes from the collision records we get from the Seattle Police Department and from Washington State Patrol. We're working more to, you know, expand our data sources, you know, kind of any opportunity we get to understand more about the crashes that are happening, you know, beyond just what's written in a, in a police report is really helpful for us. So, you know, we're looking at opportunities to kind of understand more about what's, what's happening and some of those contributing factors behind those collisions. And then with our proactive approach, you know, we're purchasing speed data from a third-party vendor. We also have developed a bicycle and pedestrian safety analysis, which helps us understand the characteristics of different intersections that are more likely to contribute to those types of crashes. And then we have a toolkit of proven safety countermeasures. So, you know, kind of taking that, that data, you know, it's really data-informed approach because on top of that, we'll also apply, you know, equity of, you know, making sure that our, our investments are going into the right communities, community engagement data. You know, what are we actually hearing from communities about what their needs are, where they feel most unsafe? And then where those capital project partnership opportunities are. So we kind of take all of that, roll it up in that, that's kind of how we make those decisions on where to invest in Vision Zero projects. So a little bit more about our data sources. So with, kind of with our responsive approach, you know, we're, we're using those collision records that we receive from the Seattle Police Department, from Washington State Patrol. And then we're, we're able to kind of, you know, any of those we can kind of analyze on a finer-grain level of detail about, you know, what the contributing circumstances were. You know, they provide everything from, you know, time of day that collisions happened, you know, what the lighting conditions looked like, was the roadway wet or dry, you know, who were the modes involved, you know, was this a bike collision, vehicle-on-vehicle collision? So there's a lot of details that we can kind of garner from those. And then we roll those up into our High Injury Network, which is kind of a corridor-level view of where crashes are happening most frequently. So this network is built up of one-mile segments of all the arterial streets in the city. And we do that to kind of normalize each of those arterials on kind of a distance basis so that we can kind of see, you know, like on these one-mile segments, where are we seeing the highest frequency of crashes? And as you can see, you know, we have certain corridors that really pop out, you know, particularly, you know, Ringer Avenue South, streets in Georgetown, Aurora, and some north ends of the city, as well as our downtown network. And so we look at those and that network is kind of scored based on, you know, the overall number of crashes and then also, you know, which crashes are causing the highest severity of injuries. So that's, that kind of helps to inform where we're investing in more of our corridor projects in terms of spot locations. On the responsive side, we look at our high collision locations, which is an analysis that we do each year. We've done this since about 2009, possibly even before then, doing an annual review of which location, kind of spot locations throughout the city have the highest frequency of crashes. And we divide those up into five categories. Unsignalized intersections, signalized intersections, mid-block locations, and then where we have pedestrian crashes and where we have bicycle crashes. So to kind of understand that and then, you know, really emphasize the need to improve safety for vulnerable road users. And so, you know, that, with those, we can often see really distinct patterns of types of crashes we're seeing in different locations and, you know, really respond effectively with a safety treatment that can, that can help to mitigate those patterns. So for example, if we're seeing, you know, a lot of left-turn pedestrian crashes, signalized intersections, that gives us a clue like, you know, maybe we can put in a dedicated left-turn phasing here. Or, you know, if we're seeing right-turn crashes, looking at opportunities for doing leading pedestrian intervals or no right turn on red kind of treatments. So it's really great to have that detailed data. On the proactive side, we use, we use our proven safety countermeasures, but we also have our bicycle and pedestrian safety analysis, which is kind of a roll-up of, it was a kind of an innovative risk model that SDOT conducted a few years ago and continues to update based on characteristics of different intersections where we see bicycle and pedestrian collisions occurring. Kind of pulling in, it was a regression model to kind of pull in, you know, those different characteristics and understand, you know, where those, what are those characteristics that are, you know, more likely to contribute to different types of pedestrian and bicycle crashes? So that, that model gave us an output of, you know, even if this intersection hasn't recorded those, we know there are certain characteristics that we can pay attention to and address at those intersections. So this kind of provides us with kind of a proactive layer of where we can start to roll out certain treatments. And then we also recently started purchasing citywide speed data from a third-party vendor that uses connected vehicle and cell phone data to collect speed data kind of throughout our network. And this is something that, you know, any, any newer vehicle automatically transmits that data to back to the manufacturer. And then there's basically a third-party that, you know, buys that data, aggregates it, and then can sell it off to government agencies to understand more about their network. So it gives us kind of a real-time view of where we're seeing speeding issues on our streets. Helps us to make decisions before we, you know, can go out there and even collect our own data. Just kind of giving us a network view of, you know, where those issues are occurring. And then finally, our proven safety countermeasures. So proven safety countermeasures is something that the Federal Highway Administration has recognized as tools that are likely, you know, have statistical, statistically significant impact on reducing crashes for, and reduce, and improving safety for travelers on our streets. And so there's a whole toolkit, you know, if you just Google proven safety countermeasures, you'll probably find this, this really similar toolkit. And as you can see here, we've also kind of amended that to what we found to be effective in our local experience. So, you know, we were also have a lot of great safety impacts with our pedestrian half signals, not just walkways, but also sidewalks. You know, looking at narrower lanes, hardened centerlines, intersection daylighting. These are all things that, you know, we're starting to roll out at scale. We've seen, you know, a lot of great safety results with these and it's something that we can deploy more widely. So we're kind of pulling this together that I will say this isn't like, this isn't really our comprehensive toolkit of everything we're doing to address Vision Zero. But this provides us with a starting place of, you know, the tools that we know work and we want to scale up further. So we've started to develop this, you know, as folks are probably aware, we've been rolling out leading pedestrian intervals at many of our signals throughout the city for a number of years now. And this is something that we've seen fantastic safety results from. We've been able to reduce serious injuries and fatalities involving pedestrians at those intersections by 34% with leading pedestrian intervals. And so we're continuing to study those as we roll more of them out. We've start, also just started to roll out no turn on red restrictions at more intersections starting last year and we're continuing to advance that this year. And then there's a number of tools that we know work and we really want to, you know, scale up further as we continue our Vision Zero approach. Our chill traffic calming is something we're going to be rolling out on more corridors. You know, looking at intersection daylighting is a tool that we're working to include with most of our capital projects, which is basically, you know, opening up sightlines at intersections, moving parking a little bit further back from intersection approaches so that as you're approaching an intersection, you can see there are vehicle pulling out or pedestrian crossing. So it has fantastic safety results, dedicated turn phasing, corridor lighting. These are all things that we know work and things that we want to scale up further. So a lot of these treatments are captured in our new Vision Zero Action Plan. This is a three-year action plan that we just published in mid-May. And this plan is, you know, it's, it's not the first time that the Vision Zero program has published an action plan. We had one when we launched the program in 2015. But this is our first, you know, full update to that plan. We've published a few subsequent progress reports, a few, you know, kind of program updates. But this really kind of sets the framework for how we're restructuring the program and how we are, you know, really taking concrete steps to advance our Vision Zero goals. So that's kind of one of the biggest differences with this action plan is, you know, really having concrete and very specific and measurable actions for the entire department. So we established a really aggressive three-year strategy with the plan and also include in their 2024 targets. We do that because we have more certainty of, you know, what, what we can fund this year before the transportation levy goes to voters at the end of the year. And then we identify 22 strategies and 80 actions that are organized around the five elements of the Safe System Approach, which I'll get into in my next slide. They're very specific measurable actions and allows us to kind of track our progress on Vision Zero and track our progress on, you know, these metrics and what we know work. We also include a more comprehensive toolkit than what I showed in the last slide of our safety countermeasures and what you're likely to see is part of our Vision Zero approach. But we're also always continuing to pilot new things. So, you know, as we look at what other cities are doing, look at, you know, what's achieving great safety results, we want to continue to advance our Vision Zero tools and, you know, implement safety treatments that are going to be effective. So the Safe System Approach is really one of the biggest advancements in our program. So we're shifting away from our traditional approach of the five Es, education, enforcement, encouragement, engineering and evaluation towards this new paradigm, which is adopted by the USDOT and FHWA. This is based around including multiple layers of protection to both reduce the likelihood and of crashes and the severity of crashes when they do occur. So this is, there's six, six principles of the Safe System Approach, which are death and serious injuries are unacceptable, humans make mistakes, humans are vulnerable, responsibility is shared, safety is proactive and redundancy is crucial. And this, and as part of that, there's five elements, five pillars of the Safe System Approach, which are safer people, safe post-crash care, safer roads, safer speeds and safer vehicles. At the city at SDOT's level, we really have the most impact over safer speeds and safer roads as we, you know, deploy both engineering controls and then regulatory controls on our streets. A lot of these, we do, you know, implement kind of an education effort, which kind of contributes to the safer people element. But a lot of our partner agencies are kind of leading the safer vehicles and post-crash care. So we do have elements in our Vision Zero Action Plan that speak to those. But a lot of it, and you know, we're, we're looking for opportunities for where we can advance that, you know, within the city. But, you know, a lot of that does lie with partner agencies. But really the key behind this is adding redundancy to, you know, accommodate both human mistakes and human vulnerability, recognizing, you know, mistakes will be made on the roadway, but we want to design a system that can accommodate those mistakes and not result in severe and fatal consequences, you know, if a crash does occur. So I'll just get into, you know, some of these key, some of the key actions that are included in the action plan. I can kind of, you know, breeze through this a little bit. But I'll let everyone, you know, our Vision Zero Action Plan is now posted on our website if you really want to dive into these. But just, you know, as we've organized around the Safe System Approach and these five elements, just kind of getting into a few of the key actions that we've included in there. So with safer streets, we know that safer streets are those that mitigate human mistakes, are self-enforcing by design, encourage safe travel behaviors, protect our most vulnerable road users and reduce the potential for high severity crashes. So a key part of this is working, as I mentioned, to integrate safety into all of our capital projects. And so we're doing that through our, you know, updates to our Complete Streets Checklist through, we're going to soon be updating the Right-of-Way Improvement Manual, Streets Illustrated. And so we're looking for any opportunity we can to include safety treatments with all the work that's happening in the right-of-way. And then we're advancing our, our safety treatments both responsibly and proactively with those treatments that we know work and treatments that are effectively responding to crashes and crash patterns that we've seen in our streets. For those who may know, we, we received last year a $25.6 million Safe Streets and Roads for All Grant from the FHWA, which is fantastic way that we're, you know, we're able to roll out a lot of our safety treatments in some of our highest equity communities really, really quickly. And so we're leveraging that grant, we're working to design, plan and design most of those projects this year with the goal of rolling them out for the next several years. And then we are also developing an industrial-focused Vision Zero initiative. We're also, you know, just improving dedicated facilities for people walking, rolling, biking, taking transit or doing, you know, scaling up new sidewalks, enhanced crossings, many of the treatments I showed on, on the last few slides there. And so, you know, we're going to continue to plan for that more as we know more about future funding and, you know, the resources will be able to do that. And then with safer speeds, we know that speeding is a leading determinant of the severity of crashes. Can see on here, the likelihood of a fatality increases significantly as you increase vehicle speed. And this is something we've known, we've known for years. So in 2021, we finished rolling out 25 mile an hour speed limits on most arterials throughout the city. And we're looking for opportunities to continue applying context-sensitive speed limit reductions, both within our, our own arterial network and then also looking at our state-operated arterials. So we have, you know, a number of state highways that run through the city, including SR99, you know, a portion of Sandpoint Way, a portion of East Mar you know, a portion of Sandpoint Way, a portion of East Martin Way are all state highways. So looking at for opportunities where we can apply context-sensitive speed limit reductions where they're going to be most impactful. But really, a key part of safer speeds is looking at how we can design our streets for safer speeds using traffic calming treatments and road reconfigurations to do that. This is a key strategy that we're really going to be rolling out is a lot more arterial traffic calming and a lot more, you know, investigating more tools that are going to effectively slow speeds down. And then the last one here is, you know, where we don't have success with those, looking at opportunities for equitably expanding our traffic safety cameras on our streets, particularly on high-speed and crash-prone corridors. And this is something, you know, I have a lot, a lot to say about at this point, but it is this year, we're developing a draft policy on traffic safety cameras that we'll be rolling out later this year. So that more information is coming on that, I'll say. And then with safer people, you know, encouraging and empowering people who are using our transportation system to practice safe and responsible travel behaviors. So this speaks to a lot of our education and encouragement campaigns and really looking at ways we can do that in a more focused way, particularly focused towards the vulnerable users who are more likely to be impacted by those severe collisions and the behaviors on our streets that we want to address. And then also improving the safety data transparency so that folks know about, you know, what's happening with Vision Zero. You know, how can I make suggestions about where to plan for safety treatments? So getting out into the community more. And also, you know, one of the things that I'm really excited about is rolling out a Vision Zero dashboard, which we're hoping to do in the next couple of months, which will show, you know, a lot of the safety data, a lot of, you know, where we've seen serious injuries and and lives lost on our streets. And then, you know, kind of what are we doing about it? You know, what are those those tools and prioritization layers that we're using to address that? Safer vehicles, as I mentioned, you know, most, most authority on vehicle safety lies at the federal level with the federal motor vehicle safety standards. But we are looking at, you know, what are the opportunities we have to kind of influence regulations around vehicle size, weight, and then as well as, I guess, what we do have authority over currently is autonomous vehicles and looking at how we set policies around those. But we're also looking at, you know, what can we do kind of locally? So piloting new safety features on our city fleet vehicles, looking into things like, you know, additional truck side guards, road user detection, and emergency braking, intelligent speed assistance. So there's, you know, a lot of momentum to start rolling out better vehicle safety standards. And, you know, we want to advance that even further at the at the local level. And then post-crash care, you know, this this really focuses on, and this kind of traditionally defined as improving the survivability of people in crashes with timely access to medical services. But a key part of this, you know, also in our minds is, you know, implementing effective traffic incident management and effective follow-up. So, you know, when a crash occurs, we want to make sure that, you know, emergency vehicles can get there in a timely way. So we're looking at, you know, signal technology upgrades that we can, you know, deploy to get emergency medical providers to the scenes of those crashes or to other emergencies in a timely way. But we're also partnering with, you know, some of our partner agencies, the police, the fire department, to improve data collection at crash sites so that we can, you know, make effective follow-up choices about, you know, how we respond to those and, you know, start to analyze those patterns of, you know, what is happening with those severe crashes so that we can, you know, plan treatments to to really effectively mitigate those. So what's next? As I mentioned, the Vision Zero Data Dashboard is is something that I'm particularly excited about that's coming out soon. You know, throughout this year, we're going to continue tracking the implementation of our 2024 action items that are defined in that plan and then reporting back on, you know, how we're doing with those. We'll be, you know, as we kind of gear up for our next year of delivery, developing responsive and proactive safety projects and identified based on our high injury network, based on high collision locations, our proactive projects as well. And then we're also working on a number of Vision Zero policy updates this year to kind of gear us up and align us with that safe system approach and allow us to do more proactive work. So this year, we're working on a an update to our enhanced pedestrian crossing policy, working on an update to our dedicated left-turn signal phasing policy. And as I mentioned, we're also working on the policy around traffic safety cameras. And then, you know, one of our big pushes this year is also just the integration of these safe system principles throughout all of SDOTs projects and operations. So, you know, there's a lot of it is a culture change of, you know, getting us to think more about safety and all the work that we do, whether, you know, your folks are working on, you know, paving project where their, you know, their primary focus is on, you know, getting people to transit. You know, how can we do those types of things in a safe way with, you know, Vision Zero as as a key principle behind all of our work? So I'll stop it there and then open it up for any questions folks have.
That's great. Thank you so much for that. That that was a really good presentation. And it's so heartening and exciting, I guess, to see to see us taking this this seriously. It it seems like kind of a long time coming for those of us who've been tracking these issues for a while. And I was all ready to ask you about a dashboard, and you mentioned that toward the end. So would you mind just sort of hitting the high spots of what's what you expect to be on the dashboard and about when you think we might see it?
Yeah, so I think it'll be a lot of, a lot of the data that I've kind of shown in snapshot form here. So, you know, our our injury network, which will be updated on an annual basis, our high collision locations, which again, we track on an annual basis. So, you know, where those high collision locations are, we'll have, you know, work. I'll say, you know, once we roll out the dashboard, it'll just kind of be a first iteration of it. And then, you know, we we're going to continue to add data to it as we have it. So, you know, eventually we'll want to be mapping out a lot of our Vision Zero efforts right now. You know, we have a lot of great data on where we're rolling out leading pedestrian intervals, where we're leading, rolling out no turn on red. But as we start scaling out more of the treatments, having more of that on the dashboard as well. But I think the biggest, kind of the core component is actually showing, you know, what do those trends look like in our Vision Zero data and then where are those happening? So, you know, it'll kind of be an interactive tool for folks to go in there and kind of explore some of our data and, you know, where are serious injuries involving, you know, bikes or heads happening or, you know, where are fatalities happening, you know, involving certain modes? So, you know, we haven't really had that level of data transparency in the past. And so we're really excited, you know, we get a lot of questions on a almost daily basis around, you know, our Vision Zero, you know, stats. And so it'll be great to have a kind of a tool to point people towards.
And so, and and you'll track our our progress on what we're doing, right? How many LPIs do we have and how many are coming? And how many, you know, protected intersections for bikes? And how many curb bulbs and, you know, whatever the, whatever our most effective measures are, we'll we'll track how we're doing on that and and how we're planning for them, what's coming up?
Yeah, absolutely. And I think, you know, not all of it is currently mapped. And so that's something we're going to keep working on. But yeah, we're, you know, a big part of our program is evaluating and then reporting back. And so, you know, whether that's initially on the dashboard or whether, you know, that comes in subsequent reports, you know, we'd love, love for folks to, you know, know where we're investing and, you know, the outcomes of those those projects.
Yeah, I would just, I would just say as a citizen who's really interested in this sort of thing, that the the thing that I would most like to see is just is to see what we're doing, to see what kind of progress we're making on the things we said we were going to do to address these issues. And especially, I'm sure we'll track some of these things with the levy, which is another question that I have. I can keep going, people. I mean, I could, I could consume all of our time here. So I would please stick your names in the chat. If you, thank you. I see some people responding now. But I kind of lost my train of thought. But I think I asked you something provocative. So my, the other thing that I had in my in my mind, well, never mind. Since Nick has a question, let's go to, let's go to Nick.
Okay, thanks, David. So it was nice to hear, oh, thanks first, David, for the presentation. It's nice to hear that the draft safety camera policy is on track. It sounds like you said to be completed. It'll be nice to have that implemented. I know, you know, designing streets to discourage some of the high speeds is really that top priority, but enforcement is a really critical piece. I am curious what arguments and opposition you might encounter in implementing more more speed detection systems and what you all are doing to kind of plan for that.
Yeah, so I think, you know, the the key part of our policy is we just want to make sure we roll it out in a really equitable way. So there were changes at the state level, legislative changes at the state level that passed this year that we are working to align our safety camera, safety camera policy with. But we've also been working on an effort to engage communities throughout Seattle to, you know, kind of provide input on some of those practices. And so we just really want to make sure, you know, what we're rolling out is, you know, going to be most effective and, you know, is really informed by some of that input we're we're getting from some of our high equity communities and some of our most vulnerable communities. So, yeah, so there'll be a lot more information to share. And, you know, if there's more information you want to learn about the the safety camera policy, I'd be happy to, you know, kind of connect you with the right right folks on that.
Yeah, thank you. And then, David, can I ask one more question?
Sure.
It was just on the no turn on red. So noticed that downtown was one of the areas that was seeing kind of the most signage around no turn, no turn on red. I'm curious, you had mentioned some of the responsive approach at looking at some of the crash data. Is there a proactive approach with targeting more implementation of no turn on red, looking at more like vulnerable land uses and maybe site, maybe putting these restrictions in place kind of on a broader scale? Is that envisioned at all?
Yeah, absolutely. Yeah, so no turn on red is definitely one of those treatments that we want to scale up further. And so we're looking at, you know, the, how we kind of prioritize this. As you've probably seen, you know, a lot of, the majority of our no turn on red, we did seventy-three intersections last year. The majority of those happened downtown. And then we also did every intersection on the Aurora corridor. But, you know, we we can see from our data of, you know, you know, where crashes are occurring. You know, we know that there is going to be benefit to putting no turn on red on those as well. But it is something that we know that there's not a substantial, you know, delay caused by no turn on red at most intersections. And so we, that's a treatment that we want to kind of roll out more broadly as as kind of a proactive element, knowing that, you know, right turn pedestrian crashes can happen anywhere. And so, you know, any opportunity you get. And I think that's one of those kind of proactive measures that we can integrate into a lot of our capital projects. So if a capital project's coming through, they're going to, you know, touch a signal. You know, why not put in no turn on red at that time? So we're looking for basically any opportunity we we have to kind of roll that out.
Great, thank you.
Rick?
Thanks, David, and thanks, David, for your presentation. I'm with David. I think there's, there's a lot of encouraging things here. I I get pretty much everywhere on my bicycle, so I have all sorts of anecdotal things to talk about. And and one of them is I'm wondering, what is the engagement with SPD related to all sorts of enforcement? Two things that come to mind, which seem small, but if you're on a bicycle in a busy intersection, they're not small at all. One are tinted windows, which is, I understand it, it is illegal to tint the front, either the driver's side or passenger side window or the windshield, yet there are many, many vehicles where those are tinted, making it absolutely impossible to see the driver. And the second is the use of turn signals. Seattle is notoriously bad in terms of the use of turn signals. And so if you're on a bike and you're in a busy intersection and you can't see the driver and they don't signal and they turn left, it could be really bad news. So one question is coordination with SPD. The other is you had a chart, and I'm sorry, I didn't get the title of the chart, but you're saying it's a new suite of policies, which I think looks very promising. But there were two points in the chart. One was humans make mistakes and the other is responsibility is shared. There's a lot of discussion about that in this space. And the fact that, yes, humans make mistakes, but the consequences of those mistakes are not equal across the board. Someone driving a heavy SUV, those consequences are much greater if they make a mistake than if someone is on foot or on a bicycle. Likewise, yes, responsibility is shared, but it is not shared equally. We need sweeping cultural change in this country related to these kinds of statements. And I'm wondering, I recognize this is challenging. Drivers, many of whom feel a strong sense of entitlement, and it's difficult when you challenge that entitlement. But I'm hoping that SDOT is willing to start the cultural change that really needs to take place, even if we're adopting a new safe system approach, for example. And so I'm just wondering what your thoughts are on that.
Yeah, absolutely. So this wants your first question. We do have regular coordination meetings with SPD. You know, they, SPD does have, you know, a staffing crisis. And so they're, you know, we're, we're looking at, you know, what are those kind of tools that we can deploy? You know, things like our automated safety cameras that, you know, don't require officers to be on site, but still kind of provide, you know, enforcement where we don't see our engineering treatments working. But, yeah, I don't know if we've gotten into the, into, you know, turn signals and tinted windows with SPD. A lot of times it's about, you know, where we're seeing trends happen on our streets and what SPD is kind of seeing as they respond to crashes. Yeah, I I think, you know, I I think, you know, definitely a cultural change is kind of part of the safe system approach. You know, so I think, you know, with shared responsibility, I think it's it's both, you know, being willing to design our streets so that they can accommodate, you know, if a crash does happen, you know, even if, you know, a heavy SUV is involved, you know, the intention is that maybe that SUV won't be going as fast. Maybe the, you know, we have good intersection controls where we're likely to minimize the severity of that crash. But it's both the responsibility to, you know, design the street in that way, but also for a user to be aware of, you know, who else is using that intersection and to, you know, practice safe behaviors as they're using the streets. So that's something, you know, we want to communicate that as we do more education and engagement and encouragement efforts is really kind of emphasizing kind of that shared responsibility and that need for cultural change on our streets.
Thanks. Thank you. Our next question is from Andy.
Yeah, hi. Thank you for your presentations. Good, good work. Questions about the quality of the data when no motor vehicle is involved? I'm thinking of pedestrian hit by a bicycle, a blind corner, a bicycle being thrown because there's a pothole in the street. Even if an ambulance is called, they may not involve the police. And if they're barely on police reports, are you somehow gathering some of those pedestrian bicycle injuries? Or is there a better way to get that in?
That's something we're working on. Yeah, we really, we really only get a kind of live stream of our responsive data from our police collisions and so what the police respond to. If someone is involved in a crash and, you know, even if the police don't show up to the scene, they might file a police report later for insurance purposes, and those do make it into the the police's system. And so those are reported to us. But anytime, you know, the fire department responds with like a medic response, but the police don't show up and no report is ever filed, we don't get those. And so that's something we're we're working on is working with SPD to see, you know, how can we get, you know, their kind of report of data and understanding, you know, what, where are they responding to, what types of calls are they responding to so that we can understand those patterns better as well? But, yeah, I mean, we currently don't see a lot of non-motor vehicle to non-motor vehicle crashes, but that also could be, you know, the data source of where we're getting our data from and just.
Are you getting things like a pothole from find it, fix it? If a bicycle's been, you know, hitting it multiple times or anything like that or not?
No, I mean, I mean, we do have find it, fix it data. We haven't really, you know, analyzed that from kind of a safety standpoint. But that's, you know, that's, that's interesting thought and definitely something we can look into, yeah.
I would invite people to put their names in if they have a question or comment. Zio?
I'm really excited about the work that the department's doing. I think my comment is related to previous commissioners' comments. So I am a pedestrian in Soto and in the industrial district frequently, both on foot and by bike. And I think I'm mostly concerned with how SDOT and the city at large plan to navigate competing interests when it comes to reducing sort of pedestrian risk in spaces like Soto and the industrial district where both like important industrial voices have a strong opinion about what the roadway design needs to be, along with sort of individual private drivers. And so I don't, it's less of a question and it's more of a raising of a concern that I think these spaces are often imagined to be places where there are no pedestrians. And that's just certainly not the case. And so I'm really interested in seeing what strategies come out of the tension there.
Yeah, no, that's, that's a good comment. And, you know, I think that's, that's something, you know, with our projects and we always have to, you know, work with, work with our stakeholders, work with community members and, you know, both businesses and, you know, residents to kind of balance, you know, what functions a street's providing. But safety is, you know, as you saw on that first slide, is one of our core values. And so I think that's something that we're going to apply that safety lens to every single one of our projects. And so, you know, we want to make sure that our streets are operating for, you know, the users that are, that are on those streets and, you know, serving the businesses and residents out there. But, you know, primarily we want to make sure that that's happening in a safe way. So I think, you know, without getting into too many specifics, you know, I think, you know, we're always going to look at opportunities for, you know, what's kind of in that Vision Zero toolbox? What can we apply to a certain corridor or a certain street? And how can we kind of plan the network around that? But, you know, safety is a primary goal of ours. So, you know, that's always something we're going to pay attention to. And especially as we start leading more, you know, Vision Zero and safety focused projects in those areas, you know, I think that's something we'll have to address.
Yeah, so picking up on some of those themes, it has always made me uncomfortable that Vision Zero is a program within a much larger department and sort of bulk or isolated for, to me, it's my way of thinking for a long time. It seems like you're kind of creeping out from that corner now to a degree. But, and it's encouraging that Ben Numaney has the new title that he has where safety is elevated. But I'm just, I'm just curious how you are integrating with all the other divisions, where that priority lies with the other divisions. And I kind of want to maybe, well, so toward the end of May, we had a seven day period where we had six traffic fatalities. And so I think, when I see something like that, I think, oh, gosh, what are the Vision Zero people doing when they see something like that? And how are they engaging everybody else in the department to be making sure you're, you know, collecting the data you need, doing the analysis you need to do, looking forward to what's going into Seattle Transportation Levy? That, you know, how do you just, if you could use that week as a case in point of, what does it mean for the Vision Zero program and for our goals around Vision Zero when we see something like that happen?
Yeah, and that was a particularly tragic week. You know, yeah, we did see, you know, six fatal collisions happen, you know, over that course of seven days, which I don't believe we've ever had, you know, that level of, you know, that frequency of events in the span of a week, you know, since we've had our Vision Zero program. And so, you know, we, you know, with those, you know, we do conduct a review of every, you know, fatal collision that happens on our streets. And, you know, a lot of, a lot of our, you know, the way I can see it is the Vision Zero program is, you know, kind of the program that's monitoring safety and, you know, monitoring, you know, kind of our efforts. But we're lucky that, you know, we also have programmatic funds that really, really target, you know, the safety piece of, you know, having safety specific projects versus, you know, projects that are, you know, improving access to transit or, you know, maintaining our roadways or bridges. But we're also, you know, as I mentioned, you know, kind of partnering with all those other programs to look for the opportunities for where we can improve safety with their, with their projects. And that's, you know, the way we're doing that now is in a much more, you know, rigorous and robust way. So maybe if, you know, the crash patterns aren't necessarily driving, you know, where we're investing in transit or investing in, you know, roadway projects, you know, we can at least kind of apply a safety lens, all those and look for those opportunities. But then, you know, we also have our own funding sources to, you know, more aggressively roll out safety improvements in both a proactive way and on a corridor basis and on a spot treatment basis where we're seeing crash patterns happen. Does that kind of respond to your question?
Yeah, I, it doesn't entirely make me feel like the safety goal and the observations that you're making in the Vision Zero program are really transforming how we do the work throughout the department. But that's not, wouldn't be fair to put that all on you and make you respond to all that. So, gonna give one more opportunity for commissioners and then we will invite some more public comment. And David, if you don't mind sticking around for a minute, if, if we, if we have somebody in the room who has a question or comment for you during the public comment period, it'd be great if you're here for that, if you don't mind. And then before we wrap up, Michaela was going to help us with entering our colleague Deanna's comments to the records and she had to leave and then you may have some thoughts of your own. I'd be shocked if you didn't.
Hi, thank you so much for your presentation. Michaela Daphern, I co-chair the commission and I work in housing on my day job. So this is not my, my area of professional expertise, but as a resident of Seattle, we are all impacted by the decisions that SDOT makes. I don't own a car. I walk a lot of places and rely on public transit. And so just wanted to sort of reinforce David's perspective that prioritizing and having SDOT sort of lead with their heart in terms of safety first and foremost. I know it can be really difficult to prioritize the needs of the range of stakeholders that get involved in these discussions. But remember that there's a whole lot of people who don't show up in those meeting rooms who are deeply impacted by the decisions that are made. And sometimes it can be challenging to prioritize the thing that, so prioritize meeting the needs where the voices are not as loud as others. Really, really, really appreciated your map where you were showing kind of by district where we are seeing higher and lower incidence of safety incidences. And so I'd like that you started your slide deck off with kind of those hearts centering the folks who've lost their lives due to, due to traffic fatalities in the city. And I appreciate you bringing that together with data to really make, help us as commissioners and residents of Seattle really understand the conditions and this commitment to monitoring through the dashboard so we can kind of look to see what's working and what's not. To that point, my fellow commissioner, who is a transportation planner, had to drop off the call, Deanna Quintanar. And she did leave out two comments in the chat box. I just wanted to read into the record. The first is she said the crash modification factor clearinghouse actually measures how, when applying the safety countermeasures, what the reduction in crashes can be. And she provided a link to that website. And then she also said, very impressed with the analysis and approach shown in terms of the evidence-based approach that Seattle is taking. So just kind of kudos for the data-driven work. And thank you for your presentation today.
Yeah, thank you so much.
Yeah, and I do want to say again how much we appreciate it and you're doing God's work and it's, it's really great to see the commitment that, that SDOT is now making. So now at this point, I would like to invite our, our comment, again, two minutes, please, per person. If you have a question instead of a comment, I think we can, we've got time, we can, we can do that. And John, are you got people queued up for us?
We have two people in the room that would like to offer public comment. Would you, whoever wants to go first? Start with your name, please, and perhaps spell it if necessary.
Do I need to be near that speaker or something?
No, I think it'll, sure.
I could hear you, but I couldn't see you just then.
No. My name's Julie Rawls. I'm from the CID. I'm a family physician, originally from Southern California. Then I went to New Mexico for eight years and here. I also studied Ayurveda, yoga, Chinese medicine, acupuncture, naturopathy, but my career got derailed by hypoxia and obstructive sleep apnea. My oldest brother was mentally ill. I've been involved in the natural and mental illness since a teenager. And moving here was a shock because I saw Washington as all these financial and intellectual resources and you go to CID and there's just people, lumps of people, you gotta, these people dead or not? And I didn't, I don't see much of a public health presence. And being disabled, I had a hard time communicating, but everybody had a hard time communicating with our city, county, state, federal, we're just blocked off. And I have a real problem with, I just want to say I support everything that Gary and Grace said about the planning, but I think, you know, backwards even more, and I'll put this in writing in just two minutes. I don't think a foundation has been laid for a statewide interconnected behavioral health safety network that goes from federal, state, county, city, neighborhoods. And that needs to be thought out. There's, doesn't seem to be much discourse. One example is people in the CID saying, hey, just arrest those people using drugs at 12th and Jackson. And what happens when you give them to the jail? There's no room, there's no treatment. So all of this needs to be discussed and the National Insurance Mental Illness nationally has asked every state to write up a long-term strategic plan for a behavioral health safety network targeting prenatal to age 25. I was in New Mexico eight years. I come here, no one's talking about ACEs, early childhood adverse childhood events. That's key, key, key to addressing this, not necessarily hiring more outreach people, which I'm happy to do for free, but, and I'll write this up and make it a little more coherent, but we really need, like when I first, I was first in Redmond, tried to get ahold of Perry, about 44 extra dollars, 44 million a year, untagged anything for behavioral health. I could never get an appointment for six months. What happened to that money? So I'll write this up a little bit more, but I think we need more communication and coherent system and just an awareness that you need a system. It's not just on the city. It's what does the state do with millions for housing, for long-term treatment? Every state is like this. It's been mismanaged. It's a nightmare. So that needs to, with all the IT here, you should be able to do some accounting accountability, I would think, sooner or later. I did have a question. You'd mentioned a grant. What was the source? Was that federal? Given we have a budget problem, where did you get that grant? And then the traffic calming techniques, because people don't believe me how far behind Washington State is. The state legislature mandated recess for public schools last year. When I saw that, I'm like, I thought, that's just a no-brainer. You have to read, whatever, are the adults ever taking breaks?
Let's let David answer your question and then we'll get our next commenter. Thank you.
Yeah, our Safe Streets for All Grant is a, it's a federal program through the federal highway administration. Yeah, as part of the bipartisan infrastructure law that passed six years ago.
All right, thanks very much.
Could you spell your last name, please?
It's like Balls, but with an R.
Got it.
Rawls.
Thank you. Okay, we have one more in the room.
You like that? You can turn the place with me. You over there?
Or we can move the microphone. That's fine.
Yeah, my name's Maria Ho. I'm a CID. We have the people. I like the emergency services for domestic and mental people and the homeless, homeless shelter. Only certain places the people can live, not everywhere, every, everywhere on the street. Only certain places they can, they can live for homeless. The Public Safety Service, you have a gun control, my low lights on red and for the drunk people, drunk or dropped people, they're very, very seriously. Yeah, a certain of people on their sidewalk, they have fighting on the sidewalk. Sometimes you might press the people. And let's say if, sometimes the people drive too fast or no waiting for the people, for the walking, the human make mistakes there. And then there are language barriers, they have more language for the other people, like Chinese or other country people. Some people they don't, they cannot understand or to be educated for them. I'm a Chinese American, but I like more safety in America because sometimes the gun controls are very important, I think. Thank you.
Thank you.
Maria, is that your name? Maria?
Oh, last name Ho. Angel, yeah.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Okay, and we have three public comments that I received by email. I will read one and then Olivia's going to read two of them. I'll start. Okay. Dear Seattle Planning Commission, my name is Tia Petrovich and I chair the Pioneer Square Residence Council. I write to ask you that you consider stronger recommendations regarding public safety and community well-being in your recommendation to the mayor's One Seattle Plan update to the 2035 comp plan. Existing language in the 2035 comp plan includes language on the effects and impacts of homelessness, mental illness, et cetera, as it states where to place human services facilities. The existing downtown policy DT HSP 5 reads, quote, seek to avoid over-concentration human services in any one area of downtown, unquote. Our current plan, our current draft has deleted these community well-being elements. We need to refine our policies regarding human services and the location of human services, not delete language that addresses the issues. As we strive to work together as One Seattle and share in the solutions to those unhoused and in need of services, we also need to keep our focus on healthy and safe communities. We can have a balance that works for everyone. We need to understand our community plans, help our neighbors in need and not overburden any one community with any part of our One Seattle Plan. Without built-in language addressing issues, we have no roadmap for our future. We need to build what we have already learned into our One Seattle Plan. Thank you for your, thank you for your consideration.
There's the next couple. The next one begins, Dear Seattle Planning Commission, I'm writing to express my deep concern that the draft recommendations for the mayor's One Seattle Plan lack guidance on the placement of social services. The current downtown policy DT HSP 5, which advises avoiding the over-concentration of human services in any one area of downtown, is a crucial urban planning consideration. Rather than removing this important guideline, we should enhance it by addressing the impacts of both oversaturation and undersaturation of social services in our communities. I urge the commission to prioritize balanced development in Seattle by incorporating clear directives and social services placed in local city planning. This approach will ensure that all areas of the city are equipped with enough infrastructure to support residents' well-being, fostering more sustainable and livable urban environment. Guiding this guidance to a significant way of things as cities grow, ensuring equitable access, resource optimization, economic benefits, and improved quality of life for all residents. With daily Renee Vodder, Pioneer Square resident and co-founder of Circle Square. Final comment. Dear Seattle Planning Commission, I am joining others and asking to make stronger recommendations to the mayor and the Office of Planning and Community Development to better address community well-being and public safety in the One Seattle Plan. The current draft recommendations lack crucial guidance to replacement of social services. Existing 2035 comp plan policy DT-HB five, which advises against the over-concentration of human services in any one area of downtown, is essential for balanced urban planning. Removing this guideline would be detrimental to our city's development and efforts across Seattle to build healthy and safe communities. Instead of eliminating this policy, it should be expanded to address both oversaturation and undersaturation of social services across all areas of Seattle. Clear directives on placement of social services will ensure more equitable access and foster more sustainable and livable environments for all. My family has lived in Pioneer Square since my son was six months old. He is now a junior at our neighborhood school, Garfield High School. Just last week, one of my son's classmates, Amar Murphy Payne, was tragically killed at his school and I couldn't help but think of other, of another failure in the way we've planned our city with a lack of adequate youth and trauma-informed services in the central district. How many more grim reminders are required to underscore the urgent need for that forward-looking city planning that protects our neighbors and our children? The city must demonstrate great care and gravity in considering the impact of the One Seattle Plan on the safety and well-being of neighborhoods across the city. Thank you for your dedication to improving our city and our One Seattle. Sincerely, Paul Fuze, Pioneer Square resident and co-founder of Circle Square.
That's the end of our public comment for today.
Okay, thank you. Thank you all for your comments. Thank you, David, for being here with us and for the excellent presentation. We really appreciate that. If there's no further business, then we are adjourned. Thanks, everybody.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thanks all.
Thank you.
Thanks, everyone.